It takes a second to connect and we should be good. Almost there. It's loading now. Okay, I think we're up and going. Let me just mute this and on my screen and you let me pass the baton back to Peter. And we should be good. Second. Loading now. Okay, I think we're up and going. Let me just mute this and on my screen and you let me pass the baton back to Peter. It's still speaking. Here we go, one second. Let me. Alright, you're all set. Nevermind.
Thanks, Tony.
We're good, Peter?
Yes, I'm recording, so we're all set.
In response to the governor's directive to take every effort to keep New Yorkers safe and mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and pursuant to Executive Order 202-1, which allows for the suspension of the public officers law, the Rockland County Rent Guidelines Board will be conducting public hearings to set guideline rates of rent adjustments for housing accommodations within its jurisdiction, subject to the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974, for leases commencing between October 1, 2020 and September 30, 2021, via teleconference. Instructions for members of the public to simultaneously view or listen to the meetings will be posted to HCR's website for the Office of Rent Administration. Under the Public Hearing section prior to the meetings, the hearings will also later be transcribed and the public will have the ability to view the transcripts, the meetings, hearings and/or schedules pursuant to the notice that was sent out, which is tonight's meeting for presentations. The 24th for the hearing and the 24th for anybody who still wants to speak and then to set the guidelines on the 25th. Karen, can you take the role, please? Did we lose her?
She's muted right now. I just asked her to unmute.
We can try. Karen, can you unmute yourself? Okay. So in lieu of that, I'll take the role for the evening.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Martha? Martha, are you here?
Yes, I hear you.
Alright Martha, we're taking roll call. Jared Oates? Millie Guzman? Millie, do you hear me? Is she, can we unmute Millie? She's here?
Yes.
Okay, one moment. Jane Jacob? Present? Jane, can you hear me? Jane, are you here? Hello? Jane?
He apparently is still on mute, although he's not showing up as mute.
Right.
Jane's there.
Okay. Alejandra Silva-Exius?
Present.
Rabbi Hersh Horowitz? Kim Fosco?
Here.
Okay, Kim. Patricia Caldwell? Pat? Hello?
Can I ask a question? Myself on the screen at all?
Okay.
Alright.
Does everybody?
Your camera's not up, Martha.
Say that again?
Your camera's not functioning. It's got an X through it.
I don't know why I can't take it off. I'm trying to take it out. Alright, I'll work without it. You guys know.
Because I don't believe I have a camera on this computer.
Alright.
Alright, so we can turn it over now to Jeff and Guy for a presentation.
Okay, well. Everybody, just wanted to say hi, everybody, and it's nice to see everyone. I guess it's not in person. I hope everybody's healthy and everybody's well. And that's the number one thing and that's the most important thing. You know, the unit worked very hard in combining all this information. Jeff Horowitz is going to present the information to the board. I'm going to show you what you received in the mail on the computer. These will be the income and expense reports. You know, you'll see the tables, the tables 1 through 4, excluding and including also the Regency Building and also the income to cost-to-income ratios as well as the apartment change in rent information. So I'm gonna let Jeff take over while I'm going to share the screen. Jeff, you're on.
Alright, well, thank you, Guy, and thank you, everybody. Sorry about having to forward. One of our members retired from work and I sent to her work email rather than her home, so I forwarded that. That was Martha. And Millie, a single L cost me an incorrect email address, but I forwarded Millie the information prior to the meeting time. So I think we're all set for the emails. And one thing that came up this year that's different from prior years, and it may not be on the screen, but it's part of the attachments. The request from Alejandra that was sent on a separate day, those are the billings for Spring Valley and the town of Haverstraw. So I knew there were questions, there may be questions just on those two simple reports that I did send on Monday. But everyone should have copies anyway, even if we don't have it on the screen at this second. But I just wanted to, if anyone, including Alejandra, had specific questions, if not, I could just review the billing lists. One thing I wanted to make clear to the members is that these lists are not only rental buildings, they include co-op and condo buildings as well. Now luckily for Rockland County, we do send requests to owners of both. We don't get tabulated results from the co-op condo owners, but we do send per the board's request our letter and our emails. So these are comprehensive lists of the properties for Spring Valley, which is by far the largest of the two municipalities. And basically, it's the same format for each of these lists. There's a building identification number, which is HCR's number, and I think you know about these from prior years. And where it says type, another column, that's whether it's a rental, which the majority of them are, or it says co-op without the hyphen, so it looks like coop, but it is co-op. Now, co-op could be also co-op or condo. So if somebody says, "Well, this is a condo, not a co-op", yeah, but for our purposes, since the majority of buildings in all counties that have converted are co-op, we use co-op for both. Then, there's a building name. We did a lot of work on this to help our identification of these properties when we were converting to a unified system back in 2016. And we went online with the surveys. We did a lot of work addressing this issue, so we should have accurate names for those properties that do have names. So that's why you have some that have a building name, while others probably smaller properties or maybe single buildings, not complexes, those don't have quote names, but we did our best with it. The most important thing is coming up, which Alejandra requested, which are the building addresses for these properties. And those are clearly spelled out for you. And where it says units, which is another column, second from the right, those are the number of EPA units that are in these properties for this year's fiscal year bill. So the treasurers or the officials receive this information, and this is the most up-to-date list that we have available. So, and then I believe I explained this in my email about the charge issue. Excuse me, just get a sip of water. One thing about the charge, which is secondary to you guys, but it was primary for us, is that the the EPA fee per unit used to be, for many years and many decades, $10 per unit. With this Rent Tenant Protection Act of 2019, the HTPA Tenant Protection Act, Housing Stability, HSTPA of 2019, Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act, that act authorized an increase in the EPA fees and the New York City stabilization fees to $20 per unit. So that's why, if you figure this out, you could do 66 units, let's say, for 99 Union Road, and you multiply that by 20, and that'll give you the charge, which is what the owners pay the municipality. Each owner pays the municipality, and the municipality pays HCR. So that's, it's a two-page document if you print it. For the Village of Spring Valley, it's a total of 35 buildings containing 1,959 EPA units for these properties: rental, co-op, and condo.
What's that number again?
It's 1,959.
If anyone is looking for this particular email that the Research and Analysis Unit sent, it was sent this past Monday. It was sent from Jeff to you, so that's the 15th of June. Look around 12:13 PM on your email inbox and you will see those two documents.
Right. They were sent on Monday. And the same thing applies to the town of Haverstraw, which is the, there are only two municipalities in the entire county that have EPA in them. All other municipalities, to my knowledge, never had it, or if they did, they no longer have it. But for as long as I've been in the unit, which is quite some time now, they've, these are the only two municipalities in the entire county. And you can see there are relatively fewer, quite a bit fewer properties. And the reason you'll have in the Haverstraw billing list, one ID covering different addresses, is that this was a co-op conversion, and it covered these three different addresses in the town of Haverstraw: Bervort Drive, Charles Lane, and Darian Court. And under these three addresses right now, unless the treasurer or the official lets me know there's been a change, we have a total of 75 units, subject to ETPA. And that means that theoretically, these are still occupied by EPA tenants. However, as I'm sure you guys are aware, or if you're not with co-op condo situations, once the EPA tenant vacates, the unit is not only exempt, but it's available for purchase. So that 75 number could change once, if there's a request made for a unit account adjustment from the sponsor of the co-op or any co-op managing agent. We could get a request and the official in the town of Haverstraw would let me know or let the unit know. And we would have to adjust that 75 unit charge down. Because one thing about co-ops and condos, as the years progress, there are gonna be fewer EPA units, because more tenants leave or pass away or move, and the unit is no longer subject at all to ETPA. So that's different than rental units, which now, thanks to HSTPA, are covered under existing stabilization and EPA. There can no longer be vacancy deregulation for even EPA units. So that's another thing that the law made a change in, which is significant. That'll help the overall unit count stabilize. Because in prior years, we had some of these vacancy deregulation situations, and consequently, we had a drop in the unit counts from registration year to registration year. Hopefully now, with that law change, there should be, except for these co-op condo properties, there should be very little change in the rental universe.
There's any questions specifically on the billings? Let us take it right now before we move on to the survey statistical analysis.
Did you have any questions, Alejandra, while we have you? Or any other member?
No, not at the moment. Just trying to process everything you said about the co-op condo conversions, as well as the vacancy deregulation no longer available for the rental units.
Right, and you know, again, per that law from 2019, there will no longer be vacancy deregulation in rental buildings.
Right, so if it's a co-op or a condo, that's different.
And that's always been different, no matter what law there is. They are a special class because their conversions and the vast majority of these conversions are non-eviction plans, which allows the stabilized direct tenant to remain in occupancy without purchasing. So it's only when those tenants vacate, the unit becomes available for purchase by a resident shareholder. There are very unique circumstances, I guess, so that no one asks me later on. Well, what about an individual unit owner? And there are situations, just so that I get it out there, where you can have an individual unit owner approach the sponsor and say, "Hey, I wanna buy this occupied apartment as an investment property or an investment unit." We do have certain situations like that. It gets kind of sticky and tricky. Because sometimes the registration histories aren't the best with co-ops and condos, so we try to be as careful as we can, but in those situations where you have an individual unit owner who purchased the shares, the stock who bought the stock shares from the sponsor, but that unit is still occupied by an EPA tenant, that tenant is subject, and the owner cannot evict that tenant for, you know, for frivolous reasons, obviously.
Martha has a question. Jeff, Martha has a question. Let's get a question in for Martha.
Sure.
Martha, you need to unmute yourself.
Yes, I hear you.
Well, I can't hear.
I thought I heard.
I think she's, Martha, you're on mute. You just have to unmute yourself. Either press the spacebar or go to the mute button and press unmute.
I'm unmuting myself. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I wasn't understanding the difference between the rental and the condo, but I got it now when you re-explained it. I understand it now, no question. I'm done.
Okay, so we're gonna start the
Could I ask a quick question? I'm sorry.
Sure.
This is Kim. I thought, I might have not heard you correctly, so I just wanted to clarify clarity. I thought you said that the condos and co-ops may not have been represented fully on the, you know, information that was distributed. So wouldn't that affect the accuracy of the document?
When you say the condo co-op was not distributed, it's never been included in the tabulated data reports. Those are, the board many decades ago requested information from co-op condo properties. But they were never supposed to be included in the tabulated data, because it's very, very difficult to, in a way, delineate sponsor units and maintenances versus regulated rents. I mean, as everybody knows, and for those who don't, shareholders pay what's called maintenance. But that doesn't have anything to do with the regulatory system. Those are determined by the boards what the maintenances are for the shareholders. So those things are never reported to the board. And it would make, it's a good idea not to report them for the reasons I just said.
Thank you.
Okay, right.
Are we ready to go into the survey? And the survey, that's the annual income and expense survey, and Jeff will explain to you first, I guess, the differences between the two documents. You have two documents. One is based on 15 schedules. As you can see, this one in particular says 15 schedules. But you also have another document, and I'm gonna switch quickly just to show you that there's something called 14 schedules. And Jeff will explain to you the difference. So when you read it and you go over it, you will understand the difference between the based on 14 schedules and one that is based on the 15 schedules. And then we'll explain to you how the numbers came out this year. And of course, there were some challenges, some hurdles, because of the COVID-19, unfortunately. A lot of people wanted to defer, because their accountants were not available. Some people wanted to go until the end of July in order to do their accounting. And they were, could not, or would not be able to submit some information, but we were able to get a nice sample, a very nice sample, and present that to you. And I'm gonna let Jeff take it away from this one.
Alright, thank you, Guy. And luckily, I mean, when you see the 15, the tabulated first report, which is based on 15 schedules, that is only 2 less than last year, which was quite a good year. One owner, again, like Guy was mentioning, didn't have the data because his accountant was preparing it. Another one was very late in submitting, and we tried our best, but even extending and extending and extending wasn't good enough, so we missed out on one survey that could have been submitted. But the owner, you know, was very late in submitting, and we had to send it back for correction, and therefore, and then time expired. You know, we can't keep this data open forever. That's what I have to, we have to cut it off for for tabulating and reviewing these tabs. So basically, if you don't know, and probably you all do know, the higher of the two, which is one more building, but it's a huge complex, Regency Village. And when you see the 15, I think Guy's showing you the 14. Yeah.
I'm showing the 15. I just want to show that there's two different, two different reports.
The two different ones.
Everybody has it in front of them, but I'm just showing you that I am flipping between, this is the 15 schedules. This will be the 14 schedules. As you can see, the 15 schedules contains 1,678 housing units, while the 14 is 1,116, a difference of 652, if I'm not mistaken.
It's 562.
It's 562, I'm sorry, 562.
Right.
The numbers are around.
It's a very large complex. Let's leave it at that, but it is Regency Village with 562 ETPA units. I am very nice to the managing agent for that complex and her superiors, because without that complex, we don't have that many units to report, and it's important that we stayed on top of these buildings. There was another one with seven buildings. We were very much on top of that agent to the nth degree. And I'm very pleased that we got 15 reliable surveys. I mean, when you compare it, what's that? I mean, 2, 17%, sorry, 17 schedules, so 1.7 is approximately 2. So we basically received 90% of the submissions, almost. If you wanna look at it in a very statistical way, very simple, but we did fairly well. So the whole question about the 15 that, you know, may be an issue, is that because of that large building, if you look through the three years of data that the operating statement requires owners to complete, the 15-unit building, because I was just doing this when I was visually inspecting these tabs, and I saw for calendar year 18 in the real estate income section, while the other two years have zero associated, during calendar year 18, there must have been a large real estate tax refund. I'm theoretic, this is my theory, because for the other two years, they reported zero. And for the 2014, sorry, for the 14 tab schedules that you have, I could even say it without, yeah, there it is. Guy's very much on top of things. As usual, you could see that calendar year 18 is a zero. So that's why, me and my very creative mind, no, I said, "Well, it's gotta be Regency Village that caused that real estate income category to spike." And it's probably a tax refund for calendar year 18. Because rental income is the predominant type of income for all properties for all counties. So this isn't just unique to Rockland County. For the three counties, rental income is the predominant source of income. Non-residential income could be, again, garage space or commercial space associated with these buildings. But you can see that basically rental income is the largest source of income to owners.
Just to, I'm in just for a second. Everybody knows that these numbers, again, they're in the thousands, so when you look at an income for 2019, it says 24,905. That's 24,905. Jeff was speaking about the 2018 sucharies, which are basically, people may have filed with Rockland County a dispute, an owner may have um, people may have filed with Rockland County a dispute, an owner may have filed some kind of an appeal on his taxes, uh, or anything, or it could be a couple of owners, and that's a real estate refund of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Um, uh, maybe there's some, um, some, some jurisdictions in Westchester. Uh, every five or six years, they also give a certain rebate, I believe. So not really sure how Rockland County's, uh, works their taxes, but this is what they're reporting back as getting back after some kind of a proceeding, uh, whether it was a, uh, uh, some kind of, uh, an adjustment or an appeal.
Yes.
Uh, whatever it was, that, that was for two thousand eighteen, there were no appeals or no refunds, uh, for two thousand nineteen or seventeen. I'm sorry, Guy.
No, it may, it may very well have been an appeal by Regency to lower the assessed valuation. Could have been an appeal. But again, I mean, that's what's significant about the income portion that I, that I gleaned from looking at both sets of tables, just that one item. Otherwise, from year to year, things look fairly consistent. If you look through the three years of income, except for the possible appeal maybe, or a tax refund, or a slowing of the assessed valuation of the complex, that was the only anomaly really for the three years in income. And expenses, if you look, um, numerically again, like Guy was saying, uh, that would be, you know, one point two eight one million for calendar year seventeen for the total of fuel costs or fuel expenses. And it went up sl- somewhat during calendar year eighteen, went down again for calendar year nineteen, which from what I'm gleaning again, makes sense because fuel costs have declined over the recent past. So that would make sense from, uh, just looking at fuel costs.
Right, right.
Utilities, very little, I mean, ins- I wouldn't say, it's not significant change from year to year for utilities. Real estate taxes, yeah, that's true, I mean, cause that's an expense. Although, you know, the taxes did go up during calendar year nineteen, so there was an increase. Eight, seventeen and eighteen were kinda flat. But there must have been a tax increase for the county that resulted, possibly, I'm not, I'm not sure, why it jumped to five million two seventy-four.
Well, it came down in eighteen.
Insurance, again, there was an increase for calendar year nineteen in insurance costs. I mean, it is significant because it's a small number of buildings. It's a one hundred thousand dollar increase in insurance costs, I believe, correct? About a one hundred and six thousand dollar increase, so it's over a hundred thousand. I would think that's somewhat significant.
Insurance increases are probably because, um, the, um, over the last two years, insurance companies have been, again, going out at the, looking at the counties and looking how they're assessing the properties. Uh, many counties have been assessing the properties and, uh, and prices have gone up, and that's what you're seeing, uh, reflecting back from insurance companies charging more money as the value of properties have gone up.
So it just could be, again, an increase in value that causes the cost to go up for insurance coverage, you know? Management, not significant. I mean, again, I guess a hundred thousand dollars is somewhat significant. I mean, for calendar year nineteen, yes, there have been increases. I mean, you guys as board members can look at that. I mean, for the recent past, there have been some increases. Now, management, yes, there was an in- now, but repairs and maintenance, conversely, there's been a decline over the three years. Um, I know people are concerned about calendar year twenty twenty, let's say, going forward. Because of the change in the law, maybe there's, there's talk amongst owners that there's less incentive to improve properties with the changes. I'm sure you people have heard this as well. One of the criticisms maybe of the new act, that, you know, that's what owner, I don't, I'm not making an opinion about it, that's just what we've heard. But we'll know a more, we'll know more about that in terms of maintenance in future years. And then Guy knows, he's explained these tables before about interest, including and excluding depreciation. Expenses, sorry, including. And if you see, if you go back up a bit, you can see expenses excluding interest and depreciation. That remains, again, fairly flat, interest part of it. Fairly modest increase in nineteen. Depreciation makes sense, well, it went down a little in four, in nineteen, hmm. But if you minus that, you see, the total expenses includes. So the, the category above where it says excluding is minusing those two categories, just to read the tables. The total expenses at the bottom of page one always adds them together. Anybody have questions about that? That's pretty straightforward.
Yep. Could I ask a couple of questions, please, I'm sorry?
Sure.
Number one, um, what is the difference between management and payroll? Is that...
Well, payroll is a specific expense for the survey because, um, payroll is the employees. Well, I mean, maybe you can explain it better. I know payroll is specifically for employee payroll costs. Now, management can ex- can be outside management. Because with certain properties, you have a payroll department. That's the man- that's the company's staff costs. But with management, it's not only in-house management that's used for that category. It can be an outside managing agent. You see, if you're an owner, of course, you have your own payroll costs affiliated with your company. But if you have a managing agent besides, if, especially if you're the owner of a large complex, you're gonna need that outside management company or agent to do rent collection, rent billing. So that, I believe, is where a separate management expense category is about.
That's correct, it's all the expenses that the management and the outside groups that are hired to ha- to run the building, while payroll is specific to the payroll and what the employees are earning.
Thank you, and then one more question, I'm sorry. I know that fifteen people, um, or owners submitted the surveys, two less than last year, all that. Is there, is there a list like about, like, people who repeatedly do not do the survey? Do you guys keep track of that?
We have a, we do, we have a good system of historical submissions. And, you know, and again, this is truthful. We are much more aware of things, and we've come so, we're very scientific now in our approach because not only do we send them emails because of re- owners who do register their properties with HCR, but for the minority that don't, we send notifications prior to the opening of the survey. So the notifications which are sent the month prior, our first thing notice to the owners, to their most recent address, and then an email based on prior years. We usually go by three prior years, including the most recent year. So we've cut down our emails to make them as most recent as possible. Of course, if we have twenty nineteen for all owners, we use that. But some owners have not, let's say, registered, which in this case was our most recent year, twenty nineteen. And for eighteen and seventeen, we have a, a larger number. So we're very careful now with our emails to try and get the most recent owner possible. But, you know, look, I don't have to remind you because he was out, he was telling me this for many years, the recently, well, not so recently retired, well, who was it again, April? He would always complain about the D and B list. One of our former members.
What about Wilbur?
Wilbur. And because, again, we don't have a requirement to file.
It's a request, it's not a requirement, and there is no penalty to the owners for not filing with us. So the fact that we've gotten this many surveys over this number of years, and it's probably been at least ten years since the D one list, which is what makes them have to submit it, because if they didn't submit it, they weren't entitled to guideline increases. But the court overturned that. So the way the regulations and the law are written right now, there's no penalty to owners for not supplying the survey information.
Now Martha, I see that you're raising your hand. Uh, just to let everybody know and to also further answer Kim's question, uh, remember if there's a new owner who cannot supply the board with three consecutive information, income and expense information, they will also not be included on this survey. So just keep that in mind, that, uh, we may have that type, that issue, besides, of course, if anyone doesn't file. Taking, um, on the point that April just mentioned about B and D list and Jeff, um, it is in the owner's best interest to file this survey. Because if they do not file these surveys, then the board does not see their income and expense. Um, so even though there's no B and D list, and, um, I, I think it's, it's extremely pertinent for them to file this and provide this information to the board. I know that if I was an owner, I would definitely would want to do that, it's the most logical thing to do. I'm gonna move on to Martha, cause she's raising her hand.
I can't, I, I don't, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I hear you.
I don't hear.
Martha, if you can hear me, uh, we can hear you, you can just speak and ask the question.
Martha, you have to unmute it, there you go.
Wait a minute.
You're good, speak now.
All right, I just wanted to agree with what Jeff was... We go through this every year, and we know that people are not required, and there's no incentive to make people fill out these forms. So I think we do have good information, it's the same as every year with these landlords, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, you know, the whole issue is that surprisingly, the number of Rockland submissions has stayed fairly consistent. And it's not, and we try our best with this county because it is a small county to begin with in terms of numbers of EBITA units and properties. So we know all too well that we have to work very hard with these owners. Now, you'll even have some owners who fail to register, and the state is getting much tougher with them. And we're developing lists of those who failed to register, not only for New York City, but for the suburban counties. So we're on top of things, but it is, uh, it's a challenge with Rockland County because some owners are, I, I don't wanna speculate, maybe some feel that, well, the past couple of years, there's been no increases, and who knows what goes through people's minds? But I can't read people's minds, but what I can tell you is that for survey purposes, we've been consistent. And we would have had the same number this year if it wasn't for COVID nineteen. Because both those owners who couldn't do it for this year had every intention of submitting. One was late, but the other fellow was gonna submit, but he had to wait for his accountant. So this is a very, look, the fact that we're doing a virtual meeting, I mean, I, it's so ridiculous that we're doing, not ridiculous, I'm glad we have the technology, but it's very unusual, I should say. But there's always a first year for something, and I'm glad we're able to do it, you know? But this has been a very challenging year for everybody, including state employees. All of us have had to work from home in difficult conditions and putting together meetings and reports. I'm not trying to cry in my own teacup, but I am telling you the honesty. That it's been a challenging three months for the staff of this agency.
I'm gonna look at table two, which is, uh, the percentages of expenses, uh, both in expenses of excluding interest and depreciation, uh, for the three years of seventeen, eighteen and nineteen.
And again, um, table two is... Sorry, let me get my hard copy. Now, these are percentage changes rather than monetary amounts. So that's the real significant difference. So again, instead of a monetary amount, you have a percentage change, or a percentage, uh, change from year to year, or just for that particular year? It's not changes from year to year, it's, fuel is six point one percent. Would that be six point one percent of the total of expenses?
Of expenses, yes it is.
Yes, so it should add up to one hundred percent on the bottom, which it would.
But once you include the interest and depreciation.
And depreciation.
Basically, the percentages have remained, uh, very steady, as you can see. Um, um, uh, if you look at the expenses excluding, just, just take out the, uh, interest and depreciation, um, you're almost at sixty-eight constantly. Uh, again, expenses excluding interest and depreciation in two thousand seventeen, sixty-eight point one, sixty-seven point nine and sixty-eight point zero, very, very, very solid. Um, and even though, again, we're missing the two buildings that we had last year, still, we are, um, you know, within the same range, uh, of interest, uh, uh, and expenses and also depreciation. Um, nothing, nothing major on table two, um, very, very solid.
And it's in table three that you'll notice what I was speaking about earlier, the, the, the change from the, the two years, really, over the three-year period, and it's the first year, seventeen, eighteen, the first two years of the three, and then eighteen, nineteen is the second, is from year two to three. Seventeen, eighteen is year one to two, and eighteen, nineteen is years two to three. Now, let's see. This is with Regency Village, so again, there could be a difference here. Yeah, we're going to table three, just to see if, with table three and the fourteen build, fourteen, um, building tabs, it's a more consistent change over the two, over both columns, you see? Rental income was two point five percent of the total. Uh, change from seventeen to eighteen, sorry, was two and a half percent change. The rate of change versus eighteen to nineteen, which was two point two percent. A rate of change, which is fairly, um, that's fairly consistent. Now, we're back to, um, fifteen, the fifteen tab?
All right, this is the fifteen tab, uh, showing again, in two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, you had a change in income of about four point six percent, and just, uh, uh, just a little below half a percent, at point three, a change in income from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. So these gives you a little bit of, uh, uh, of, of, uh, a picture of what happens. Uh, in fact, we... Uh, in fact, we spoke about real estate taxes uh, earlier, and if you recall, uh, real estate taxes was zero, uh, yet, there was a change from eighteen, nineteen, as you can see. Uh, for example, real estate taxes changed as a negative one hundred, because two thousand eighteen, someone received, um, as we said, a, um, kind, some kind of a rebate, at two hundred fifty-six. And then in two thousand nineteen, it was zero. So percentage-wise, you go to the percentage table, that's what it's showing you, it's showing you that negative one hundred percent. Uh, don't be scared by the large percentage, again, we're only talking about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that they received as maybe one or two buildings, or three buildings, that they received during a Sertiary's appeal, or um, or something with the county. So since there was zero the previous year, it's basically a hundred percent increase for this year. That's what you're saying.
Well, like I said earlier, that, that real estate, if you look at, again, the, the numer, the monetary amount, if you compare table one for the fifteen schedule tab, you'll see the two hundred fifty-seven thousand figure in calendar year eighteen. But if you go to table one of the fourteen schedule tab, you'll have zero, which means it had to have been Regency Village. It's only that one building, because if you go, if you compare the two tabs, right? I'm, I'm pretty sure about this. Back to table one, which gives you the numerical amounts. And I wanna make sure about this, unless I'm reading. See, for the fourteen unit build, fourteen buildings tabulated data, there was no, no, no increase in real estate income for the fourteen units, excluding Regency. Because that's the one excluding, you see the lower unit count by five hundred and sixty-two? Then if you go to the fifteen unit schedule, again, for table one, the first tab again, first schedule, sorry, you'll see the two fifty-seven figure, so that has to be Regency Village. Because the fourteen has zero. So it has to be that one large complex that guy speculated maybe had one a tax appeal or something, and received two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars in a one-time income. So that's why you can go from zero to a minus one hundred percent, because for, there was a one hundred percent reduction because of Regency Village not getting any income from the real estate tax or Sertiari proceeding in nineteen. So that's why, that's technically correct. It looks very bad, or fishy, but it's technically correct, cause Regency had no real estate ap- appeal won for calendar year nineteen. So, you know, the question is how you like to look at these tables? That's why we've given you two sets, basically, so you can compare. Sometimes Regency could theoretically skew the table with that one real estate uh, issue. That's a skew, if you wanna look at it that way. But regu- uh, compared, other categories are much more stable, with the exception of that one income category, if you look at them. They're more stable, even including Regency.
Let's move on.
Okay. And we're in um, table four now, which is again, the income versus the expenses now. So we have one line for total income for the three years. A slight in, the increase in from seventeen to eighteen, you know, that could have, again, been partly due to that um, Regency tax, Sertiari refund, whatever. Because then, there's only a slight increase from eighteen to nineteen. Cause nineteen, we had no real estate income for the fifteen buildings.
Anyone has any question, uh, particularly on this uh, tab? Cause I would like to go to the, uh, to the vacant apartments and the cost to income ratio.
Please.
Alright, now this is again, included in your emails. And um, basically, it's a four, it's a set of four tables. And the only thing that um, maybe needs a little bit of explanation at the beginning is where we have two terms, statistical terms, mean and median. The mean is a, is a strict average of all data in a table. Uh, the median is more statistically valid, in a way, because it accounts for extreme outliers. So in statistics, you'll always have outliers, and the median previous and current rents are statistically probably more valid, because it takes out the very, and since this is a small county, again, there aren't that many issues, we have a total of eighty-seven apartments that had changes in rent. And um, but the, the thing is, at least the median takes out whatever extreme values there are, extreme numbers. So for our purposes, we usually look at the medians.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
So, so you'll see a previous rent in the median of thirteen hundred. And then, these are one-year uh, renewal leases. So a previous rent. And then you look at the, not only the numerical amounts on the left, which are the rental amounts, but then that's the, the totals. So you go from left to right. So for example, you had no previous rent or prior rents in the zero to four ninety-nine category for the county. Then you, for some lucky people, there were a lot, maybe two apartments in the five to nine ninety-nine range that were re-rented. Again, this is over the three-year period, though, so um, we always capture three years for the income and expenses data. That includes the vacancy schedules, or vacancy reports.
Uh, just, I'm sorry to interject, just in case someone forgot how to read these tables. If you look at the left column, I'll give you the old rental. If you look at the top, um, it will give you what is it, you know, renting now. So let's just take a quick look at the, uh, at the, uh, in a thousand to fourteen ninety-nine. There were about uh, five, fifty-two of them that um, remained within that um, project. And, and about five of those apartments actually went up and are now paying fifteen hundred to nineteen ninety-nine. So what you're seeing, again, top line is the rental, the left line is the old rental prices.
Right, the prior rents are on the left side, and the current rents would be on the, going to the right.
Yes, Martha, you have a question?
Yes, let me see if I can do this right, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes, go ahead, Martha.
No, we can't hear her. Martha, you muted yourself again.
Unmute myself, I'm unmuted.
You're good.
This does not tell us the apartment size, so for example, from fifteen to nineteen, that could be one bedroom, two bedrooms, three, but we have no sense of, or square footage, do we?
Um, I believe this is just by leases, not by unit, not by apartment size. These are both by lease terms, there are four tables, and they're basically about current rents for one-year leases versus the prior rent, and current rents for lea- two-year lease terms. But the point is, it gives you, it, it's, because it gives you the, the amount of the prior rent on the left.
No, no, the answer to your, Martha, the answer to your question is you are correct. There is no way of recording whether it's a studio, a one, two, or three-bedroom apartment. This is jo- just solely the change in rents when a apartment was relea- was re- leased to a new tenant, when it was leased on a vacancy to a new tenant.
That's correct, and if you look at the second table, it's actually speaking about a two-year lease. Uh, whether it's, many people did not wanna take a two-year lease, for whatever reason, you know, we are only calculating about three of them. So um, not many changes on the uh, two-year lease, and very few um, tenants chose to actually take a two-year lease. This is again, uh, it reflects going back to the first page and the second page, if you guys are, are looking at this. This is just, again, in percentages, we try to give you guys the percentages, rather than the numerical dollar value. So you would be able to see, um, for one-year lease, percentage change from year, from lease, lease year to another lease year, uh, and from a two-year uh, percentage change. So this is, the last two pages, percentage changes, the first two pages, uh, for one and two-year lease, numerical or dollar changes.
Right.
And uh, if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
And really, the total categories, which are the bottom, really give you the distribution. There were the, the lower right is your total number of changes in rent for eighty-seven for one-year leases, the prior table. So you had eighty-seven changes in, in lease terms, or changes in tenancy over the three years for these fifteen buildings, basically. And the majority of the rental amounts seem to fall within the one thousand to one thousand four ninety-nine range. Then the hot, second highest would be the fifteen hundred to nineteen ninety-nine range, at nineteen apartments or units. And the five, and the one, and the five to nine ninety-nine range, which is quite low, actually, you did have still eleven apartments that were still in that range for a one-year lease. So like I was saying, the vast majority of tenants chose one-year leases with eighty-seven total.
Would anyone have any questions regarding uh, these tables?
Actually, I have a question for you guys. How many apartments total were part of the fourteen or fifteen schedules that were submitted?
How many apartments total, it's on the top of uh, each sheet, so let's go to the fifteen, and if you look at the top of your um, of your sheet, it talks, it gives you a whole uh, summary. So on the fifteen schedule, you have one thousand.
So out of the sixteen hundred seventy-eight apartments, only seventy-eight were vacated and re-rented, based on the information that was provided on those schedules?
Correct, and out of the, out of the sixteen seventy-eight that you were just mentioning, only sixteen hundred twenty-six were subject to ETPA.
Okay, but out, out of over sixteen hundred apartments
Correct.
that submitted schedules to this board, less than a hundred apartments were re-rented at a different rent, or that somebody moved out dur- that was reported, maybe they moved, they reported it.
Correct, ninety-one apartments, we can be exact, we can be exact, ninety-one apartments, eighty-seven of them chose a one-year lease, and three of them chose a two-year lease.
Essentially, less than a hundred apartments became vacated and subject to whatever guideline the board passed last year, which was zero, but it would have been whatever it would have been, so you guys do the math for that, but that's really not a lot of apartments that were.
That's correct. Alejandra has a question, so I'm gonna let her speak.
Can't hear her. Alejandra, you have to.
Oh, sorry.
Yourself. There you go.
Could you go back to that table, cause I can't actually see it on my screen? So essentially, if I'm understanding this correctly, there's fifty-two units that became vacant and were re-rented at the same amount, so most of these units were essentially, the rent stayed the same.
Well, again, they were rented in the same category, okay, whether they went up twenty dollars or thirty dollars, uh, they were within the same category of one thousand to fourteen ninety-nine. They started off in the range of a one thousand fourteen ninety-nine, and when they were re-rented with a one-year lease, one-year lease.
Less than fourteen ninety-nine.
They were still kept in that same category of one thousand fourteen ninety-nine.
Gotcha.
So they weren't, they weren't necessarily the same rent, but they were within that period, within that.
Yeah, I mean, these are all four hundred ninety-nine dollar ranges, so these are quite large ranges, I mean, so it's very conceivable, especially with low guidelines or zero guidelines, that you're gonna stay within the same category.
No, but these were vaca- these were vacated apartments, Jeff, they were subject to whatever increase.
But they had the twenty percent.
They had twenty percent, they had vacancy increases, and they had.
Again, out of.
Right, but it was still, it's, it's a very wide range, so it's highly likely that it would stay in the range. I, I'm, I'm just saying that, looking at the table, I mean, they're not very, they're wide ranges, and it's highly, it makes sense that they would stay within a range.
Exactly, that's right.
I mean, when you think about it, even with the twenty percent vacancy that was allowed during the three-year period, yes, that was still allowed.
So Alejandra, out of the category of a thousand to fourteen ninety-nine, there were fifty-seven units, and five of them were raised between a thousand to, between fifteen hundred to nineteen ninety-nine, you can see that to the right of the fifty-two. That's just to give you just a little bit more of a, an understanding, and you can see the number of fifty-seven all the way to the right, uh, that were in that category.
Right, so five of them were left that one, had a higher category.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, now that is no longer allowed, correct? That, once you have a vacant apartment, the vacancy deregulation is not in effect any longer because of the new law, is that right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
At this point, at this point in time, they're not entitled to any vacancy increase, and there's a limitation on the apartment improvements that can be made to apartments that are regulated, owners are entitled to increase percent, by percentage, up to a fifteen thousand dollar improve, set of improvements, within a fifteen-year period. I think the last time I actually did the quick math, that comes out to a maximum of about eighty-nine dollars per apartment. Guys, this, the economist, so he can do the math better than I can, but I'm pretty sure it comes out to less than a hundred dollars on
You're good.
the apartment improvements.
Yeah, that's good. Uh, anyone has any questions specifically on this particular ta- on these particular tables, before we move on to the uh, cost-to-income ratio?
No, let's go.
Alright, the famous cost-to-income ratio. Uh, and as you can see, we've been doing this for even longer than nineteen eighty-seven, but we're just showing you from nineteen eighty-seven. So we're talking about thirty-three years, uh, you can read the description, what is the in most stabilized building income receiv- received by owner exceeds the expenses paid to operate their buildings. Buildings are represented to be in a better financial position by spending a lower percentage of their income on expensive, the cost-to-income ratio is just one method, again, you guys can calculate and do your homework on your own, but this is just one method, providing a profile of the economic conditions of the stabilized housing stock that's in Rockland County. Historical data from prior surveys, and they're dating back thirty-three years, shows the pattern of change of the income to cost, uh, to ca- uh, the cost-to-income ratio. Uh, and we have also the including and excluding depreciation, as you recall, from the other charts. Um, and, let's go down, just to see it. Does every, did everybody get this document, everyone has it? Because it should have been an email on Monday, from Mon- Monday's email. Because it should have been in the email on Monday, from Mon- Monday's email.
And again, for this particular table, just one note, um, this is using the, the, the data tables excluding the Regency complex, 'cause you'll see fourteen buildings, um, in the parentheses. The one in the parentheses is excluding, the one outside of the parentheses, the first one is including. So, that's why we have two, two, um, basically, two figures. Is that the fifty-eight point nine percent is including Regency, and the fifty-nine point four is excluding Regency. And that's why that, it's for many years now, we've divided that, we've given you two, two figures. Again, to be consistent with the tabulated reports.
If anyone has any questions, otherwise, uh, this is our presentation. Thank you, everybody, for being patient. It, uh, just wanna say thank you so much to, uh, the entire Research and Analysis Unit. Uh, it's not the largest unit, uh, and, uh, they just, uh, worked so hard, you know, uh, just putting this together between Jeff and Horowitz, and, uh, Mike Lanjuli, and Sal Howie, and, uh, myself. I just wanna say thank you very much. It wasn't easy, but, uh, as Jeff mentioned, just because, you know, we are far away, different counties. Uh, not, some people are in Nassau County, some people are in, in the city, some people are in Brooklyn, and we, we made it happen for, so far, two counties, hoping to be able to solidify it for the third ETPA county next week. Uh, Jeff, thank you very, very much for taking the lead and doing the presentation.
Oh, no, no problem, I enjoyed it very much. It worked out very well, guys, you know, considering.
Any other questions?
Did everyone, does everyone now have the emails from me? Or, I noticed that Pat has a different email than the one I used, but were you able to get my tables, Pat?
Yes, I was able to get them, thanks to April.
At some point after this meeting, can everybody please just email me their most current email address? Because I have a couple of different ones. Like Alejandra, I think I have like two or three different email addresses for you. We just found out, I had Millie's right, but he had it wrong. And I think we have Martha's now right, but they had it wrong. So, if everybody could just, and I think, Kim, you have a few different ones also. So, just send me whatever email address you want everything sent to you at. Please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, before we're, before we take, uh, a motion to adjourn, just to, just one thing. On our, on DHCR's website, there is a notation for everybody and anybody that wants to testify next week. Um, they need to register. Once they register, they will be sent the Zoom information, so that they can be included as part of this. And, uh, if somebody doesn't wanna testify, but all they want to do is watch it, this meeting has been streamed live on YouTube, as will the next two meetings, slash hearings. Any questions?
Oh, thank you. Just to share with everybody, this is actually the place on our website, that NY, that GOV, RGB hearings, and you have all the information if you want to submit.
Thanks for sharing, Guy.
Thank you.
Can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm ready. All in, ladies and gentlemen.
Anybody have any other questions, or are we done for the evening?
We're done for the evening. Thank you very much, you guys did a great job.
Thank you. It was very, very enjoyable, thanks. Thank you for having me.
Everyone.
Okay.
Nice to see you, guys.
Nice to see all of you.
You too.
Good night, guys.
Good to see all of you.
Say well.
And speak to all of you.
Right, be well, everybody.
Okay.